Did you find?
Yeah.
It's three o'clock, I'm gonna call this work session into order, it being June first of the year 2021, 3:00 PM. The invocation today will be Councilwoman Mark Mattler. We do have Councilwoman Denise Swannar and Councilman Thompson will not be with us today. Councilwoman Swannar will be running right now. Councilman Mattler?
Thank you. We're all right? Dear Father, we thank you this time that we have to come together, Lord, and just be here for the God, just pray the Lord, you may just help us, Father, to make the, make good decisions, Lord Jesus. Give us the wisdom, the law, so that we need to be able to hear what's being said to us, Lord, and Jesus, that we may just be able to make the best choices for this city, Lord. And we just pray for blessings upon each one here this afternoon. You know, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Everybody can receive. Just give me one moment. Just give one moment, we'll get started in a few minutes, okay? Okay, go ahead, move on. Item one, consider reservation given notice of intent to issue City of Odessa Texas combination tax revenue certificate of obligation. This is gonna be serious, twenty-one, that's fine, sir.
Good afternoon, Councilor, how are you? Um, this agenda item which will be a voting on next week is to consider adoption of the resolution relating to the giving of notice of intent to issue the CO issue for 2021, that in, that's the issuance of not exceed ninety-five million. And this money needs to be used primarily for the water treatment plant rehab. The actual wording in the ordinance allows for any acquiring of property or anything in relation to, that's just in case something comes about with a water treatment rehab that's necessary so that it will be covered. Um, I've given, I sent you the resolution last week, and we also have the notice of intention that will be posted in the newspaper as well as on our website. And it gives the information on the actual issuance. Uh, the purpose, the payment back of this is comes from, will be coming from water and sewer fund. But in order to issue certificate of obligation and get that backing of tax dollars, it's just a pledge. It's not that we intend to use any of the tax dollars, we will not be increasing the tax rate in order to make those payments back. It will be paid out of our water and sewer fund. Uh, George Wilford, our bond advisor is with us, um, we have a presentation on your, in front of you, and we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but we do wanna talk about the timing. So you're all aware of what the process is and what we will be doing next week. And then, uh, the actual date to approve the issuance will be on July twenty-seventh at the regular scheduled council meeting. And then we'll be able to answer any questions, John.
Mayor, our members of the council, pleasure to be back with our director, George Wilford, with Hilltop Securities. As Cindy just went through the little packets that we had prepared for handout, does have a timetable, and next Tuesday would be the date that's intended for the council to consider acting on a resolution to publish the notice of intention to issue the COs. That publication has to occur for two consecutive weeks, with the first publication being not less than forty-five days prior to the date when the council would have stated in the notice that they intend to come back and enact on the actual ordinance authorizing the issuance. So, as you see in the calendar, that provides for June tenth and seventeenth as prospective publication dates. Then the dates really from there, all the way to July twenty-seventh are the busy work associated with what's required for actual issuance of any type of debt. Preparing an offering statement, an official statement, contacting and conducting meetings with rating agencies and getting those ratings back again. So that then on the twenty-seventh of July, which is at more than forty-five day time period, is a regular meeting date that council could consider authorization. And then the plan would be that actual pricing would occur on a delegated basis soon, within about a week thereafter if the market conditions are conducive to that. So the closing could in fact occur by the end of August would be the target. We've also included information previously seen regarding the structure of debt issue that in the market with premium dollars actually due to this because of the yields versus coupon rates. The issue size would be expected to be quite small, but it'd still be, it would be soft and an instruction produce ninety-five million in this case, actual project dollars and see the debt services we discussed as well. We also put some information about market conditions, without going into great detail over that, what I will say is market interest rate wise tends to still be very favorable to financing. And this was done as a Friday a week ago, and I've got updated information as of the end of last week. And the markets have acted very stable, interest rates changed depending on the purity, one to two basis points last week. So the hope would be that between now and July, everything, the council approves proceeding, or the first log is would stay relatively stable so that it's still be favorable financing conditions. But with that, I'd be glad to help seeing answering questions about the process or the notice and everything itself.
So what would be the issue, with the exact date of the issuance and interest rate would be what date?
The July twenty-seventh would be when the council would authorize the delegated to the city manager and assistant city manager to build improved pricing. Would help have everything in place that within a very few days or a week, as it's here on the second, we would be able to go in for the underwriting, when the market actually sell and what's in the right.
So then we're just subject to the market till then?
Yes, and so the reason that we have either Michael or myself to approve it so that we don't have a wait another two weeks to come back to council, so you have that flexibility. So upon your approval on July twenty-seventh, the market is not looking like it'll change drastically in a few days. But our plan is to be assumed after July twenty-seventh as possible.
Um, another question. Council, any questions, comments? Um, minimum impact to the, to the rates? We're talking thirty years, forty years?
I'm sorry?
Thirty years, thirty maturity, or forty years?
No, these are on a twenty-year basis.
Okay, so what's, what's minimum impact in worst scenario?
We were looking at five and a half percent. Um, I think that's still a little bit up in the air depending on what the final bid comes in. As y'all know, in the next two to three weeks, we should have an available price from our consultants on what they think the bid's gonna come in at. Uh, we won't let bids until probably end of August, first of September. Uh, so it could, um, we need to be a little bit flexible with what our plans are based on, what that comes in at. But they're telling, they mean it's been indicated that it won't exceed ninety-five million dollars.
So we're looking at August second for the issuance of the certificates and then the interest rate, but we're not gonna get hard, not gonna tell on the bids till late on.
Right, and this day in time, it's kinda hard to get a bid and then start the process because bids will only stay good, I mean, some of them are the same thirty days. But, you know, some are sixty days, so you pretty much have to have your financing in order beforehand so that, you know, that you've got money to go ahead and award the bids.
For the issuance, it's gonna be ninety-five. At this point, are we going?
It could, it could be less if it won't exceed the ninety-five depending on what we, what we found out in the next few weeks. We could also, you know, like George talked to y'all about this, we can do a short call on minimum amount of the financing and pay that off early, which would reduce the rest of your payments throughout. So if we got a bid that's managed and we had some money available, that we could do that, and that's an option.
George, explain that a bit to me.
Yes, I know, they came up in the last meeting we were in, and we discussed that bid, because bids came in a little later, or even going forward into the future, in the next several years. The normal rule of thumb is on municipal bonds, they have a ten-year call feature, you can call them at far after ten years. Most cases, you're shorting at eight or nine with minimum impact. But what we would propose is a lot of counties and school districts in particular, in oil producing areas, because it's a bagage, one thing, have put a shorter call, like a two or three year call for your own part of the matuities. And we would propose considering that because then it would give you that ability if costs were more dollars or some available funds down the road came in, that you could actually make the decision instead of having to wait for the worldwide prepaid principal, pay down the debt at the end of this cost.
Does that, does, would, does that affect the rate?
It would if we tried to do it on the whole thing, so we'd probably just identify, as Cindy said, several million dollars along the matuities and put a short call on those, not try to do all of the call the matuities without a short feature.
So the market itself could not be influenced by that?
Uh, like I said, it would have a little bit impact on the interest rates if you pay a little bit of premium rate to get that short call, that's why we'd only do a portion.
And it would be a portion of that.
Any other questions?
Yes, the, so the estimate, I know it's just an estimate, because we haven't, it was not set in stone yet. Uh, the estimated combined principal interest would be about one hundred and thirty million dollars once everything's done. Is that for twenty years?
Yes. Yes, and you should, this is in your packet that you saw, and it gives you the amount, that, the amount.
On this far left column, it tells you what we're paying on our current debt, which is, um, will expire in twenty-twenty-seven for the water and sewer fund.
And if I might, that estimate to go in the notice and everything and just footnote on this debt source schedule is about ninety basis points above current market rates. So whereas that's two ninety-five, if you were able to sell today, you'd expect an interest rate very close to two percent, so reduce that.
Anyone questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and just to verify, and it's not because I don't know, it's because I see it on the comments. If this is approved, it cannot be used for homeless shelters, it cannot be used to feed the poor, it cannot be used for those things, it can only be used for what we have set aside for to feed. And it's not that I don't know, but I've seen it a lot in the comments.
Exactly, and so that's why the notice of intention is very specific as to what you use, can be, and so that as a whole, that it can be used for years.
Exactly right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Council, any questions or comments? Ms. Scottson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item number two, consider approval of the PSA community board downtown master plan update. How you doing, sir?
Good, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an item that will be considered at the council meeting next week, is a consideration of the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Moore and Associates for a downtown master plan update. The tax permitting investment zone, or TURS number one, following the council's meeting where the planners presented and the vote did not pass, provided staff a direction to revisit the Kim Lee Moore plan, reduce the scope as far as the costs and the timeframe of the plan. They still wanted the same type of master plan update product to be produced. So, city staff did have several conversations in meetings with Kim Lee Moore. We did let them know the sentiment of the TURS board, and also where we did get the council meeting to reduce the scope as far as costs and the timeframe. They did come back to us with a reduction in costs. They do have a proposal for us at eighty-five thousand dollars for a master plan update, and they can complete that in six months. Uh, with us today, we have Brad Long River with Kim Lee Moore, and he has a presentation, and he'd like to walk us through the actual master plan process with the new scope. So I'll turn it over to Brad if you want to come on up.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mayor Council, for having me today, appreciate it. You did not get to meet me last time, you got to meet my colleague, Yvonne, but I got to be here today to make sure that we're, we're really focusing on what are the differences between our last proposal and this one? Uh, as well as kind of reiterate some of the things we've noticed that'll help us streamline and expedite the process that we're comfortable with.
Make sure.
F-five on the screen?
There we go.
Awesome, okay. Uh, so this-
Excuse me real quick, this one's not working again. It's a conspiracy, I tell you. Uh, there we go, hold on, let's see what this is. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
A sabotage, it is.
Is that what it is?
How good? Okay. One more question. Okay, so the team is the same, we've kept the same consultants along the way, we didn't drop any of them along the way, as we've been doing. Our reevaluation of what the scope and fee would actually be moving forward. Um, just to reiterate some of the key points, you did have twenty sixteen adoption, myself and Chelsea Berry on the team, we're both part of that process, we gave away planning. Uh, we since moved on to other firms, but we're very happy to be able to propose on this with you all, and come back and look at what two point L looks like. Um, you did, we did go through an extensive process of visioning, engagement, a number of workshops, I'm not sure if any of you were a part of that, but when I was at the TURS board meeting last week, I got to run, so we're part of the state, we're so it's kind of nice to see them on your faces, and be able to move that forward. Um, but we do wanna emphasize, in partnership with Downtown Odessa, we were able to do a lot of engagement in Downtown Odessa along the way, on a lot of that programming effort, to make sure that we were having events that people could come and talk to us at. And so we look forward to that kind of partnership, again, as we move forward, because we think it'll be essential to making sure we have enough public input in this process, given the reduced timeframe. Um, just looking at what you currently have, it's been, up until last week, it's been five years since I'd actually been here and seen all the improvements y'all have been making. Um, it's been great, infrastructure, most awesome. Uh, the street trees down there look so much better than they did back in the day, and I can tell you a lot of the improvements around the convention center are right in line with what we were hoping with that pedestrian walkability, and making sure that there's a lot of share parking opportunity within the downtown area. Um, from a commercial standpoint, obviously, the convention hotel was not even built yet, and that was right out of the plan process, we worked with the developer with that to make sure it was adhering to the design values of the Downtown Vision Plan. Um, since then, you've had torches coming in, it is by far the best torches I've ever seen. So the design standards are working, they're doing higher than typical standards, and it's very pedestrian oriented, so even though it's not got, it doesn't have a mixed use element, it still allows for room to have mixed use in the future. It didn't take a whole swath of the block with a bunch of parking. Um, so it's really oriented towards a lot of the goals of the area. The actor theater's been renovated, there's been so many cool things that have been going on, everyone enjoyed driving through last week before the tip four meeting. Um, we feel that there's still been a great push on programming with some of the convention startup, that last week there was an event, and cars were everywhere, stuff was busy. So you're starting to get a lot of downtown activity again, you know, coming out of this COVID world, where we're starting to realize what we missed for so long, so a lot of folks are getting back out into it. We wanna make sure to emphasize the governance of Downtown Odessa in terms of programming and that, and make sure those are a part of the plan moving forward, in case those schedules have changed or renounced. We'll make sure and incorporate that into the, the plan update. Um, you've had employment growth and wage growth, so you're, you're up on those elements, it's always positive to start to see those things. Um, you do have a greater population under forty-four, forty percent of your total population in fact, and you've had two percent growth in your demographic population. So just looking at, what are those things that those folks are looking for? Uh, happen to be in that range, so are those things that I'm looking for when I go out to new places and what we're drawing here? Um, especially those folks that live around or within downtown, making sure that they're taking advantage of those things and those activities in the downtown area. Um, you do have three major job sectors that have seen a significant growth over the last five years, and so we just wanna make sure we're doubling down on supporting our employers, making sure their employees are taken care of, and that their recruiting and retention efforts are really in mind as we move forward. Especially the healthcare, with two major hospitals in downtown, wanna make sure that those doctors, nurses, and janitors, all those folks are able to get food, get home safe, if they need to run a late night snack run, that they're, they're feeling comfortable doing that in your downtown. So moving forward, as we look at what this alternative plan would actually encompass, many of the in-person meetings we had scheduled before are actually going to be virtual. Um, not from the public side, we're actually gonna have a consolidated three-day workshop, that would be, our whole team would be in town, and we would be having in-person if possible, or virtual means locally here. Uh, hopefully more outside, so it's nice weather, we can hang out outside. Um, but we would incorporate any really quick updates to existing conditions, just updating what's happened in the last five years. Make sure that we're accounting for everything, we're going through stuff with staff, we understand where capital improvement budgets are really focused, so that we can take those into account as we make recommendations. Uh, we'll also be including a workshop scheduled in that phase one, um, planning process. When it comes to community engagement, COVID has thrown a loop for planners like myself, the last year, where those of us who are really passionate about in-person workshops and in-person engagement, we've had to really dial back what we're actually doing and how we do it. Um, so we've, as a firm, have adopted social pinpoint, that allows us to do a virtual interactive process that we normally do around tables with public and do the markers on post award, we're not able to do virtually. And so what it does is it gives everyone an opportunity to give input from the comfort of their home, on their phone, and at any time of the day, so they don't have to be there during that two-hour window that they're actually having a meeting. Uh, it allows sort of surveys, IDOS, and all of that to be included in this process, so we wanna make sure we're incorporating that virtual engagement. Um, and we would also be doing a community workshop, like I said, for three days, we would be here in person, making sure we're getting down to the nitty-gritty, doing the drawing that we normally do, and then releasing that to the public and making sure that they're able to give input on what we're working on. We wanna make sure that engagement is cycling through three platforms, traditional, the mailers, making sure that information's getting out from the outreach standpoint, online through your social media efforts, we would be working with you and Downtown Odessa to make sure that we're getting the word out about public meetings or any type of website. Uh, and then again, we would strive to do as much in-person as possible, just given current circumstances, looks like very positive, we'll be able to be here, we'll be in person, meeting people one-on-one. And you can see from that, though, I had much darker hair back then, uh, but that workshop will, will include my whole team in town, we'll make sure we're doing the downtown walking tour, figure out what's new, what's changed, taking photos, fresh photos for the downtown plan. Um, really strive to, to focus on what are new catalytic projects, before the catalytic projects was the convention hotel. Uh, and there was a number of other small improvements after theater renovations, so you've already done that, we're gonna take that off the list, we're gonna take that out of the plan, we've already done it, what's the next step? What do you do next? And that would really help with capital improvement plan, understanding where to put funds, where to make improvements in the downtown area. Um, and then we would still walk everyone through the downtown update in terms of just making sure that the plan is comprehensive, and then go into the adoption implementation plan with staff, uh, by their side, as, as, to help them through the planning and zoning condition, as well as city council meetings. Uh, again, the timeline is six months, uh, our virtual kickoff meeting would happen as early as July, and we would have hoped to be in here with our workshop towards the end of the summer, if not earlier, to make sure that we're just tracking with the timeframe. Uh, but we would need help with very social presence, make sure that your communication team's on board with us, and that we're using your name like, likeness very well, and in positive light for this process. Um, so just a side-by-side comparison, uh, the two approaches, we'd be cutting by about six months. Uh, we're cutting, uh, a bit of fee, the fee that's being cut is not in the call, in the work, it's actually in all the extra meetings that we would do for six months, it's in the extra calls in person, we're reducing, we're actually doing a lot of our meetings virtually with staff, instead of being in person every three months. Um, so there's a lot of elements that we're just cleaning up and being much cleaner with. Um, and I think that that's the realized cost savings, it's not, it's not in the quality of the work or the level of input or analytics. It also puts with the six-month timeframe a higher priority on Odessa than other projects that we're working on. And so we'll be able to really focus our team, get us in, get us out to all the work, and really spend time writing through the end of the year. I think that's all I have.
I can take any questions. You guys have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank you guys, Phil, Kim Lee Moore, everyone who went back and took the time to review the project again. I think downtown is a vital part of Odessa, very vital, Craig, all of everybody that worked with us, the tiers board, um, it's just very important to me as a, as a lifeboat Odessa and a resident of Odessa, that we focus on those areas, and we have some great things going on in Odessa. And I think to highlight and to enhance those things just makes Odessa another place for people to wanna come and look at, and it's very important, and it's worth spending this money on, should it get approved.
Well, I appreciate that, and I can just tell you, five years later, all, all the word upwind is that we're on grant, that are no longer there, I mean, y'all have come a really long way, y'all will be really proud of where downtown is headed. We just gotta go, just gotta go to the next step, and it'll be that much better.
Right, in addition, I, I think community influence is very important, so I'm, I'm glad to see that built in, because we wanna hear from everybody, not just little groups or cliques or whatever. We'd like all of Odessa to have an opportunity to participate.
Absolutely, and we like to set a goal minimum, two to four percent is usually, usually two percent of the population. Absolutely, and we like to set a goal minimum, um, two to four percent is usually, usually two percent of the population in general. Um, but we, we often exceed that, so we're very proud of that.
Thank you, any more comments or questions? Let's just talk about one question. Can you give us an assessment, uh, about how the board feels about this new plan?
So we've met with, um, Brad last week at our term meeting and had the opportunity to question, uh, you know, what the difference was. And, um, having assurances that the, the scope would be the same and the outcome would be the same. Um, I believe everybody on board, um, was excited to be able to take actions, excited to be able to bring this back to council with the passion actually out, to bring off table back to the work session. Um, so I, I know we're excited to get to work and, um, like you said, keep going.
Thank you very much, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Any more, let's, let's call him. Thank you sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move to item three presentation regarding the C I C's recommendation for impact fees. Mr. Kerr.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I wanted to initiate this item and, uh, and the national to assume, to assure everyone that the things we are discussing today and consider next week does not implement or set fees. So I know sometimes it can turn out where we are in that process. This doesn't implement or set any fees. Uh, this item was presented the development and recommendations of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee regarding im- impact fees. We are presenting this, uh, to initiate your considerations on those items. Uh, the next, uh, item is to set a head hearing date for that consideration and we'll follow that. Uh, before I introduce John Atkins with Kimberly Moore, uh, for the presentation, I would like to ask John Adra, Chairman of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, to, uh, uh, provide his thoughts on the project.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, the council appointed a pretty, um, strong committee, uh, to do this. Uh, Mike Witrow, uh, is involved, I think he might have bought or sold any property in Odessa. Those Mike, uh, Philly Gonzalez was a former city councilman and sat where you are and, uh, has a huge understanding of how things get financed and how the city operates. Joe Her, uh, represent one of the largest landlords and in the path of some of the, uh, projected growth, a lot of the projected growth of Odessa. Dr. Goats, also a city council, former city council member, Reverend Randall and Charlie Pearson. Everybody was, uh, very, uh, took this real seriously. We, we've been meeting, uh, since last fall to try to, uh, come up with, uh, the recommendation that he'll be, uh, hearing. We had core on rules, so we, we, we couldn't just meet and talk, but all of us have a lot of input from a lot of the stakeholders in the community. And we listen to them, uh, I think you'll get to hear from them probably, uh, when you call your public hearing. But there's been a, a tremendous, uh, effort to understand, uh, we couldn't have done it without Tom and his team. And, and poor Sandy, anytime you come about spending money, she gets all the hard questions, uh, she was very, uh, helpful to us. And then the folks that really did the heavy lifting, that did all the, uh, detailed analysis with Kimberly Moore and, and, uh, Johnny Atkins is here and is going to go over that. I want to tell you, one of the biggest things that was important to our committee from the very beginning, we listened to all the facts, I think we had open minds, but we wanted to make Odessa competitive. And so we looked at neighboring communities that have impact fees and our recommendation is based on to make Odessa a competitive place. And we know their recommendations and y'all certainly have the broad even will do, as you see fit best for the city of Odessa. We're trying to give you another tool in your toolbox so that we can help Odessa continue to grow. So be happy to answer any questions and get to the meat of the project now.
Thank you, John, I'm sure we will answer, thank you.
Thank you, John, and everyone, uh, developers, John, uh, everyone is taking this very seriously and it's been a very good process, I think, so. Uh, would you sit down and John Atkins, if you will, come up and give his presentation?
Thank you, Tom. Mayor, Council, um, state law requires that an independent consultant do this work. And we're here to do the, do the analysis and provide and communicate that information along with communicating the vision of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. So that's what we're going to go over here today. All right, so, all right, here are the four main items that we're going to talk about. The city councils action items, the things you've already done today, plus the things that are going to be coming up. The impact fee study itself, we're going to go visit some of the last steps of that, uh, review the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee's recommendations. And then last, we'll look at the impact fee comparisons with your neighborhood east, um, that was most applicable to the analysis. Okay, action items, the council, um, you're back in, uh, March and April, we went over the land use assumptions and then impact fee capital improvements plans with you all. Both in a work session like this initially, Jeff Whitaker, my partner on this, that focuses on the roadway side of things, presented to you all. And then we went to the public hearing in March and you all approved those two particular items. And then the last key item here is to look at the impact fees that come out of that analysis. To revisit the adoption calendar a little bit, uh, the red and the blue shows where we're at today. So the items that we talked about a little bit earlier, uh, that took place in, in, uh, April. And then a little bit there in May was the stakeholders and C I C were meeting today to review their, uh, recommendations. And then as we move forward, there is a setting of the council, uh, the council's setting the public hearing. And then mid-July is the public hearing itself. The information you'll hear today would be the very similar information that you would see at that public hearing. If there's questions or concerns, there's things that you want to change, this would be the time that we can talk about those kind of things, uh, for that public hearing. And then lastly, if you so choose to move forward with an adoption of an impact ordinance, then that would be in late July. And then y'all can make a decision on the implementation schedule. Okay, the impact fee study, the items that you see, the previous presentations, we've gone over with you all before, the land use assumptions, the growth assumptions associated with that. The impact fee service areas, uh, the impact fee plan itself, which y'all have approved. And today, we're going to talk about service, what service units are, uh, impact fee calculation in and of themselves and then the comparisons. So let me call a lot of engineering numbers stuff here, so bear with me as we work through it. The farther I go through the presentation, the more I think it'll click. And then when we get towards the end and if we need to come back and revisit something that you have a question on, you kind of get, ah, okay, that's what he was talking about. As we move forward, I'll be happy to go back and we can talk about any of those items in detail. Okay, first of all, service units, where are they? Well, the law defines them very specifically as this statement that you see at the top, it says a standardized measure of consumption attributed to an individual unit development. That sounds kind of weird legally-ish, I'll kind of tell you the realities of what that means here. Uh, we focus on three main items for the impact fees and that's water, infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure and roadway. So, uh, the definition of a service unit when it's related to water and wastewater, obviously, there's a consumption of water by individuals and then there's a discharge of wastewater, so those are interrelated. And they're related and the measure is defined by a water meter and the base water meter size in town is a three-quarter inch meter. For example, like your home, most homes in the town and the city use a three-quarter inch water meter. So that's the foundation for the service unit that's used for water, sewer, impact fees as a measuring tool. And I'll, you'll understand a little bit more as I go through. Roadway, it's a unique concept, it's called a vehicle mile, so that's the measure of one vehicle traveling one mile. And you'll see kind of some comparisons, I'll show you in a minute, that make that a little bit more understandable of what that means. Okay, here's a comparison here, water and sewer service units, uh, like I was telling you a second ago, a three-quarter inch meter is what most homes use in the community. And to give you an example, something that we use a larger meter, like a two-inch meter, that'd be like a shopping center. And you're going, well, how much water is that? But if you look at the, what a two-inch meter can utilize versus a three-quarter inch meter, it's almost five and a half times more water can go through a two-inch meter than a three-quarter inch meter. So it corresponds to your actual business or a home comparison, a shopping center, their impact fee or their water usage and their wastewater discharge would be about five and a half times more. So that kind of gives you a relationship there of usage when it comes to water and sewer and what that service unit looks like. Okay, roadway service unit, there's two key manuals that the engineers, the Institute of Transportation engineers uses the church generation manual along with the National Household Survey and the Local Government Code to develop theirs. It's not quite as simple as the water, it's just your focus is on a meter size. And what corresponds with that comparative between a house and a shopping center, we give that same comparison here, had you relate to it. But a house generates almost three vehicle miles. So it's, I'm going into all the details about how that's calculated, a little bit of that's above there. And a shopping center generates about seven point five three vehicle miles of traffic. So if you think about it, if you think about traffic going to a shopping center versus traffic going to a home, traffic going to a shopping center would generate about two and a half times more traffic than a house. And you kind of think about it in general rule, common sense, that kind of makes sense. So that's where that comes from. Okay, so now that you have the concept of what a service unit is for water and sewer and roadway, we're going to go to the impact fee calculation minute. There's a lot of background that goes into this, but we try to simplify it to this graph. And what you see on here is the calculation for the water or sewer maximum assessable impact fee per service unit. And the formula at the top, that's in kind of the gray box, is the, is kind of the key formula. And I'll just read it to you, it's maximum impact fee per service unit is equal to the recoverable cost of the impact fee C I P and its financing divided by the new service units of demand. So what we're talking about here is for every bit of new demand that comes into town, there's a volume of infrastructure needed to accommodate that. So what we're talking about here is the dollars to accommodate that divided by the number of those additional service units coming into town creates a dollar per service unit. And that's the calculation we have to perform for you all as an independent third party. And so at the top, I'm just going to focus on the bold items you see here, your total impact fee, I'm just going to do, go down the water column and that relates to same with wastewater and roadway, which is on the next page. So if you look at water, the master plans identified fifty-five million dollars worth of infrastructure needed, um, capital improvements. Now, that fifty-five million dollars, the plan that we do for impact fees, uh, just looks at the tenure window. Now, the master plan that we did for you several years ago looks at a twenty-five year window. So the infrastructure cost for twenty-five years is what the fifty-five million is related to, but it actually takes you even beyond that to thirty to fifty-year kind of infrastructure. Now, the next item under that, we'll jump down to the one that's bold and it's the, what we looked at is at your tenure window. And so the recoverable cost for the tenure window, that also has some financing and some credits in there, gets you to about five point nine million dollars worth of infrastructure needed in the next ten years divided by the additional service units of demand that come in, which is the seventy-nine or seventy-five ninety-five. So what that equates to is a maximum assessable impact fee per service unit, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars per service unit or per three-quarter inch meter. And if you remember a minute ago, I talked about a three-quarter inch meter serving a home, the maximum, what we're saying here is so the maximum a home could potentially be charged for water impact fee would be seven, seventy-eight dollars for three-quarter inch. And the shopping center would be about almost five and a half times that when you saw the correlation of the three-quarter inch to the two-inch, kind of how you feel. And I'm going to show you some graphs here, it's going to illustrate this information to you. Okay, this is the same exact exercise, but it's got roadway. Now, if you remember back when we looked at the, uh, service areas in the original, um, planning side of this, um, the law requires that we have, we can't, um, we have to use a certain size area for roadway. And so those areas limit, limited to three service areas for the city to be, be divided up into. And that's why you see three colors of service area one, two, and three, and I'll show you a graph in just a second of those. So the same exercise goes through here, but now the dollars are associated with a vehicle mile instead of a meter. So you see twenty-seven, twenty-six for one and then service area two and three, the other values here. And you go, where are these in town? Well, this is a summary of that. So what you see here are the maximum assessable impact fee per service unit. Now, remember water and sewers for the entire study area, which is not on your city limits, but it goes outside of that study area. It's a little bit further out than just, just the city limits. And so those are the maximum numbers that we talked about just a minute ago, water being seven seventy-eight, wastewater's a thousand. Eleven hundred and sixty-two and then a three roadway service areas, one, two, and three. Okay, so I'm going to stop there a second, though, that's the analysis part, that's what this big study right here produced in the end was the, was that maximum value. So if you have any questions about that part of the study, we can stop just a second because we're heading into the comparison information here. That's the real, the real, the good information, the fun part to talk about and what the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee spent so much time discussing and meeting with your stakeholders and wanting to envision any competitive, and we're going to show you what that competitive looks like.
Counsel, any questions or comments at this point? Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so last, impact fee comparisons is what we're going to focus on now. We're going to revisit this in a minute, uh, one more time, this is the maximum chart again for Odessa. And what we're going to be comparing to is the study that was done in it. And so the reason I show this is, I'm going to jump back on, you see we've got roadway service area one, two, and three, plus the overall values for water and wastewater, which is a single service area for the whole city. And then Midland had four service areas, so there were service areas A, B, C, and D and then a maximum, or a single for water and wastewater. So very comparable to you all, with the exception that you've got four service areas, y'all have three. And the reason I show this is, this is the comparisons that the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee concluded were the best for you all to look at from a competitive nature in the whole area. So what, what does that look like graphically on a bar chart that's a little bit similar to follow, and that's what this is right here. So on the, as we go through all these slides, they're going to be similar in nature to a look here. So what you see, the first three bars are Midland or Odessa's service areas one, two, and three, as compared to the Midland's service areas A, B, C, and D. And these were the maximum values calculated in both studies. Now, yes, and what's unique about this, you kind of go, wow, Midland's was higher. What's unique is the base water meter size in Midland for their study was a one-inch meter. Where y'all's is a three-quarter inch, so that value is going to inherently be a little bit lower just because of the mathematics of it. So now, what Midland actually approved and adopted was fifty percent of that maximum. Now, there's a nuance in here that I'm not going to share just yet about single family, but I want you to understand what we're looking at here. So what we did was then reduce Odessa's maximum by fifty percent to make an apples-to-apples comparison a bit. And you can see, basically, just took the values you saw in this previous slide, just reduced them in half, is what it did, but gives you a comparison. Okay? And now we're going to walk to the C I C's recommendations and what they look like. I'm going to give you a summary words first and then I'm going to come back to this graphical form of showing that. So their recommendations for residential, for single-family townhome and duplexes, for service areas one. for service areas one, two, and three, you can see there, of a maximum fee, and this is the total. This is if you took water, wastewater, and roadway and added them together. And the total they recommend would be three thousand per service area one, two thousand per service area two, three thousand per service area three. And then for community development block ran areas in the city, reduce that down to a thousand. To make that a little bit more affordable for the CDPG areas of the community. And then there's a nuance.
Real quick, do we have a map of the CDPG area?
Do you want to flip the maps of the public?
Is, is that area expanded, excuse me, just one minute?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that, that's one, okay.
Phil, I'll just say after, you're going to have to pull it back.
Yes, sir, appreciate you. Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Phil, I'll watch you draw. Okay, and then there's another nuance that I'll get into in just a little bit. And that is the previously approved final plats would have a two-year grace period. So to try to explain that as simply as I can, let's assume that you adopted impact fees August first of this year. There's plats in works today that are happening, developments are coming in today. If they plat before August first, they would not have, and then there's, let's say it's a hundred lots of division, for example. You assess impact fees at plat. You collect when the building permits pool or the meter permits pool, because that's when you really put the demand on the system. So you wouldn't have impact fees yet, a development could come in now, plat, not be assessed impact fees. And then development starts to build. No impact fees would have to be paid for any home that's built in the next two years after you implemented a fee. So August first of this year, you implemented an impact fee of twenty-one. If all the homes got built within the next ten, two years, nobody would pay an impact fee. If somebody came and finally built a home two years from that day, they would be upset, they would have to pay an impact fee. So that's the grace period. If you look over to the non-residential side, you'll see previously approved plats, one-year grace period per three ninety-five of the local government code. So what the law actually says today, it's non-negotiable, is any plat that gets approved before the effective date of the ordinance, there's a one-year grace period. What the capital improvement advisory committee wanted to do was for residential, which includes townhomes and duplexes, extend that grace period one more year. So that's a little nuance in here that I want to try to explain as we move forward. Are you ready?
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to step through how the impact fees actually calculated a little bit. This will get to where we can then show examples of actual development types. So you're going to know how to calculate it first before we can do the comparisons. Because the comparisons aren't exactly like those base, the maximum and fifty percent that I showed you a minute ago. So for residential, or for, our example here is a residential, uh, house that would use a three-quarter inch meter. And for water and sewer, it's fairly simple, you just go to the chart in the table and you see, select the three-quarter inch meter. And once you see here, this is, this is for comparison purposes, the nuance that I didn't explain a minute ago for Odessa regarding single families is this. They do, they set their fees at fifty percent of maximum, but then they add in an additional credit for a reduction of twenty-five percent for single family. So that's what you see in this chart. So it came down a little bit more, so what I did was show this calculation as if Odessa did the same thing. And so what you see here is you would go across, pull out the table, the fee would be two ninety-two for water, three, six, six twenty-three for wastewater. And then the next step for roadway is a little bit more complicated. There's a few steps in here, this is still single family. So step one is we look at the dwelling unit type. And for single families, this comes out of this table that's in this book. It's, a house is a unit, so it's one, one house is one unit, if it's ten houses, that'd be ten units. The service unit, remember the two point nine seven vehicle miles per house? So we take that value, times the base service unit value of twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-six, and we multiply those three values together. And then there's a reduction, so that's the maximum. And then in the step three, you see here's a credit application, which is we reduce the value by fifty percent, and then we reduce it again by another twenty-five percent, which gave the total fee of, you see here, three thousand thirty-six dollars and eight cents. For that's how roadway impact fees calculate. So it's not the base, it's these, you've got these three numbers you have to multiply together. And you'll see what that does here in a minute when I show you some other examples. Sorry, it's a lot of math in here. Be patient. Okay, so this is comparison using actual, uh, single-family residential with the twenty-five percent housing, what that looks like, if you apply that same philosophy to Odessa as compared to what is in Midland's ordinance today, and what they impacted. So you can see the comparisons here. Now, this is the capital improvement advisory committee spent a lot of time talking and looking at these charts. And the real conclusion came down to wanting to be competitive. And the two areas that were of concern were Odessa's service area one and Odessa's service area three. If you remember where those are, it's the northeast part of the city is service area three, and service area one is just kind of the dune portion of the city, so it's kind of the northern half of the city. And those are comparable areas to the growth areas in Midland, service areas A and D. So you see the higher values. Uh, what it basically says is more growth creates more infrastructure. So that's why those values are higher. Now, with the advisory committee wanted to be sure is that your, your highest values were just below about ninety percent of what Odessa's, I mean, Midland's values were. So that was their approach here. But they also wanted, on the residential side, wanted to be a little bit more competitive and cost conscious for residents coming here to live. So we'll look and see what that looks like. Have to work through it. So here are the recommendations I talked about, where they were just in written form, and now let's look at it in graphical form. And remember, this is single family, the tax is your example using a base meter. So Odessa, one, two, and three, three thousand, two thousand, three thousand. And then in the community development block ran area, one thousand. Now, what you're looking at on the graph here, the blue is your water fee, the green is the wastewater fee, and the roadway is the beige or peach color. And you notice how that bar gets a lot bigger? And that's because we took your base fee, and then we had to multiply the residential by the two point three. So you almost take the base fee that we showed you earlier, and we multiply that by three. So that's why you'll see this bar gets much bigger. And when you get to non-residential, you'll see the bar get real big because the units of development in non-residential get to start being calculated based on square footage and their vehicle mile calculation. So that being said, let's look at non-residential. Our non-residential, we're going to look at here, the general office building is ten thousand square feet. They're going to use a one-inch meter, so we go to the table, we go across a one-inch. And what you see here is six forty-eight and twenty, thirteen eighty-five for water and wastewater. And then I'm just going to jump to the bottom calculation, or I'll jump to step two. So for a, for the general office, five thousand square feet, the unit development is per thousand square feet, so there's five units of development, times the vehicle mile calculation of three point four five, times your base water, I mean, your base roadway impact fee for service area one, which is twenty-seven, twenty-six. You multiply those three numbers together, you get to forty-seven thousand, and you divide that by fifty percent. And that's where you get to twenty-three, five, eleven. So that's how the calculation works for this example. Now, what does that look like graphically? You can see how much higher roadway gets really quickly when you've got those three multiple factors. And they go up in Midland too, but they don't go up as great as they do in Odessa, due to the fact that the roadway needs here in Odessa are more than are Midland. The reason part of that, and did the calculations for them too. So if you look at the, at the CIC's recommendations, they're, once again, what I talked about on non-residential, their goal is to be competitive. And so what they said is, let's run the calculation where we can maximize water and sewer the best we can, and then drive roadway up as high as we could to be about nine, about ninety percent of what Midland's maximums were. So what you see here is Midland A is kind of the driver of twenty thousand, and we drop about ten percent, and it's not exact, because we used one example here, one, one land use example, and we applied a percentage, because there's seventy land uses in the report. So we didn't walk through seventy examples and make it exactly ninety percent of Midland's. So this is what you're going to see throughout the rest of non-residential, that you're just a little bit below. And that was the approach that the capital improvement advisory committee thought was a reasonable way to make Odessa competitive, but also put another tool, toolbox to help fund infrastructure as y'all grow. Another example, this is light industrial, fifty thousand square feet. That's just the fifty percent. That's the recommendation from your capital improvement advisory committee, once again, we dropped down.
John, can I ask a quick question? On the, on the, the previous, the first non-residential, you know, you were kind of playing.
General office here, right.
Yeah.
I pulled it back up.
Could that also be like a shopping center? Is that correct? And so would that impact be, impact fee mean for the shopping center as a whole or for each individual store going in?
It's the shopping center as a whole, when it gets developed. I actually think I have an example of a shopping center in here. I mean, you're asking about specifically like if a, if a, let's say a hundred thousand square foot strip center got built that has tenants, individual tenants in that. Um, I know it's, uh, most of the time that development comes in and it's flat, it's a single flat to build a whole infrastructure. So when it gets assessed, the time of assessment will have a value here for you in a second on the chart. Now, how that gets divided up as the developer that builds it, then comes in, pulls the building permit for the building, and has to pay, now, what he can do to try to recruit some of his costs as he chops up and starts to lease, he can build in some cost to that to try to cover some of that value. That's how that come about.
Tom, let me ask you, Tom, let me ask you a question. And on that note, what people are saying is also comes into department through that nature. We're doing master meters and we can also subdivide that, like in the towns, can we not? Most times we're going to have more requests for just one master meter lead. How would that work?
I can talk about it.
So you, you would actually answer that question.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's, yes, you could come in, the master meter, which is the meter that, it can be done either way. But if, let's say, the development comes in and wants a two-inch master meter, that would, the property that's being mastered, that's the bill that goes to the city, that would be assessed and collected on that meter size. Now, if they decide to submeter themselves privately, then it's up to that development to decide if they want to recoup some of that cost.
But, but would, would the impact fee, when they, when they do it themselves, because basically when that happens, a, a, any plumber can do that, once they, they, they do that two-inch meter, does the impact fees go on that, once, once the developer does it himself? Or no, it's just going to be on just a two-inch?
Just a two.
That's what I want.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so with light industrial, same approach that we talked about, here it's just, this is just another example. We're not showing this one over another one for any reason other than just to show you. As non-res, you can see how much effect roadway has on non-residential as compared to residential. And then last one here, here's your retail shopping, ten thousand square foot, and you use a two-inch meter. Kind of an example, similar to what you said, you could subdivide those units, and they could master meter that, and that developer would need to decide how he wants to recoup that value. And so you can see this is the fifty percent, capital improvement advisory committee's recommendation, drops us down about ten percent below the service area A for Midland. So that was their recommendations. And we would apply this, um, approach to the seventy land uses or tables that are built into this. And to kind of give you, I'm just backing that, and I jotted it down here. So you're like, okay, you've got water and sewer maximized as much as you can, how much did you have to reduce the roadway fee? You know, like the previous slide shows fifty percent of each of those. And of course, it's a really high number. And so what we did, when we did the math, it works out to about, in service area one for Odessa, that's about thirty-one percent of the maximum roadway impact fee. It's about forty-three percent for Odessa's service area two. And it's about forty percent of service area three of the maximum. So just to kind of, that's how the numbers worked out. So a unique thing is like, what, what revenues is this generating for us? What, you know, we're talking about implementing this, we get additional fees coming in for the developed community, uh, how much money are we talking about here? So what we did is create a table that kind of shows that on the far right-hand side of the table is what we call the annualized capital impact fee cost. So what we've done is take that, all the projects that are needed, that are in the, that come from the master plan, and if you looked at those over the next ten years, and you divide them by annually, that means you have a hypothetical need of about thirty-five million dollars a year to build that infrastructure if the volume growth came in over the next ten years. And to keep up with that level of service, that's about how much you need. Well, if you, uh, charge the ma, you realize that's infrastructure that gets you well beyond ten years, that gets you to the twenty-five, the master plan's twenty-five, fifty-year kind of stuff, so. Um, but if you actually build a project, it's going to cost you that value. Because you don't build a lot of pieces, we don't build one lane of the road in a year, we build another lane of the road. We build a whole four or five lane roadway. Same thing with water towers, we don't build a smaller, then tear it down and build a new one, we build one big one just to maximize the costs over the long term. So the annualized cost over the ten years is, if you maxed out and charged the maximum fee, you could generate about nine million dollars a year. If you just would be split fifty, it just cuts that number in half. So we've talked about fifty percent of the max quite a bit. And that's the four and a half million. If you do the kind of unique thing that Midland did, and that is the fifty percent on all your non-residential, and then did the twenty-five percent reduction residential, you get the four million dollars. And then we did the calculation, the annualized value of what the capital improvement advisory committee's recommendation would, would be, and that would generate about the three point six million dollars. So it's, you're never going to maximize it, but, you know, three and a half million dollars a year, three and a half million dollars a year, that you can, that you're having to pay out of your fees and taxes today that you could utilize, and it strictly goes for the projects that are on the list that are focused on future infrastructure. But then what that would potentially allow you to do is take infrastructure or dollars you're using today and shift those over into operations man, it's kind of activity. So it's just, it's, like I said, it's not the fantasy and it's not the end all be all, it is a piece of a funding tool that the state allows y'all to potentially implement. And I came back out to the schedule more time. So I'll stop there and see if there's any, um, open to, and answer any kind of questions.
Can we go back to the map of the service areas?
Yes, sir. Get my old gaming skills. You want, here's, here's Odessa's, and not just the Midlands, if you want, just to do a comparison.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say, I was trying to remember which one to watch. Okay. Real quick question, uh, committee jurisdictions, impact fees within San Francisco, City Limits, like the county, uh, Midland. Where does, uh, Midland E T J stop? Is that at seventeen eighty-eight East?
It's a mile, a mile west from seventeen eighty-eight is where E T J, Odessa.
Okay, we wouldn't be having to take them, okay.
Yeah, they don't overlap.
Okay, there's one more.
Good question.
Any questions, any other questions, comments?
A lot of info, it's in your bag if you wanna read it at your leisure, bedtime, go to sleep kind of stuff. Um, but it's necessary to follow the law, so a lot of tedious stuff there, so.
What was the thought behind doing this in a three-zone area as opposed to four, two?
Yeah, it's, it's as big as we could do and follow the law. Is, is the philosophy. And what the law says is you, it's a six-mile radius. Um, if you look, I think y'all, it's kind of works out to about a three-mile zone. Um, the bigger you can get it, the more flexibility you have in spending. To be honest, we talked about it a little bit ago, or last time we met was dollars collected in that area, you have to be spending that area. So the smaller and smaller the area is, the more where you have. It restricts the money coming in and where it can be spent. So you'd like to maximize the best you can to give the council flexibility to decide when the money comes in, what your priorities are, where it gets spent. That's why we want our sewer, because they allow us to, we just make it one big service area. Y'all can collect money in any part of the city and then spend it where y'all feel the priorities need. And it's growth related, it's not, you know, it's always related to growth, so it's growth projects that are in those areas.
Sounds good. Anybody else, any more comments or questions? Anyone for John? We got one of the committee members here, Mr. Philip Beltese here, you snuck in. Any words, encouragement? Come on.
Thank you. My name is Philip Beltese, I'm from fourteen twenty-four Alameda. And, uh, a lot of people worked on this, uh, really hard. And that's why I'm here, cause I wanted to kind of follow through, see where it ends. Um, and one of the key things that I think is really important that I think Mike could probably hit on on this is, that I did see on this was, why? Why is Odessa visiting this? And, and I think that would kind of explain, you know, why does Odessa need to look at this? Because at the end of the day, you know, the city of Odessa is growing, we've got a lot of growing pains. And like Mr. Long, Mr. Long, Black Raps said, it's another tool. And, and I think it's gonna fill that lead for that particular time. I think, uh, looking at the amount of needs and how much money it's gonna generate in the long run, uh, it's, it's really gonna be helpful to have this in place. And, uh, my understanding is that, uh, this is our recommendation, but if y'all do, do diligence, which is look into it, y'all can change it. Y'all can, you know, uh, move some of the percentages, charge more, yes. I mean, it all depends what it comes down to, because it was just our recommendations, but thank you for allowing me to be a part of it. And, uh, I can't wait to see how it turns out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One last question, as far as when, when the adoption occurred, the impact fees, how much flexible do we, the, the council have to make it to be able to stay competitive? As you see neighboring jurisdictions also make adjustments? I mean, how often is that possible or are you locked in?
Hypothetically, you can do it every council. That's obviously, that's extreme case. But yes, as long as you don't exceed the maximum value, then you can set it whatever you so desire. It is, and you have to change, yeah, we had a committee a couple of years ago, I know they set it at a hundred percent. Um, I saw the vision of, oh, we gotta pay for all this infrastructure, they set it at a hundred percent. And within six months, they came back and reduced that by percentages they felt were comfortable to give you.
Okay. Any questions, any comments? Thank you very much, sir. Uh, go ahead, John.
One thing John didn't say, and I'm not advocating this, you've got our recommendation. You could vote to set it at zero, as long as you voted to set it and had your hearings and didn't put the law prescribed. And then come back next year and say, well, we're, we're getting. They sure. Are you telling us something? And you, so you even have the flexibility to vote to vote it as zero, as opposed to not doing something, it would be better to vote it at zero. So that you could then implement it in that ten-year period without having to go back and recommit and re-study everything. So that is.
And add a bottle for the, for the water and, and, uh, the road ring?
All free, all free.
Yeah. Okay, any more, uh, comments or questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, item number four, discussion setting the public hearing on adoption of the impact fees. Mr. Kurt.
Mayor and Council, uh, the item before you will ask the council to approve a resolution setting the date, time, and location of a public hearing to consider the imposition of water, wastewater, and roadway impact fees as required by section three ninety-five point oh four seven of the local government code. We will be asking council to set the public hearing for the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. During this public hearing, any member of the public has the right to appear and speak for or against the proposed impact fees. Once again, I just want to reiterate that at next week's council meeting, we will only be asking council to approve a resolution which sets the public hearing, not to take any action on the imposition of the impact fees.
Council, any questions or comments?
I have one question. Will this, um, the impact fees affect like the parks and the parks land dedications?
No, they're, the impact fees are not eligible for parks use and those things.
Thank you.
Mr. Kurt, thank you very much. We're gonna move to item number five, Public Works C I P update. Mr. Kurt.
All right, we were fooling me about the end today, actually. Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Uh, so what we're wanting to do is, uh, provide an update on the twenty nineteen, uh, C I P, uh, or bond issuance. Um, so, uh, we are bringing forward this update on the allocation and progress of public works projects under that bond issuance. The twenty nineteen bond issuance. Uh, the first line. Okay. So this first line is a breakdown of the items assigned funding under the certi- certificate, certificates of obligation. The use of the funds are all related to major roadway and drainage projects. Um, the public works, uh, or, and, and, uh, downtown. Public works capital improvements funding is allocated as forty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's the total amount of funds that were set for public works, uh, in the bond. There are two major categories demonstrated. So on this, on the, uh, certificates of obligation table that you see there, uh, we have two ba- main categories, design and construction. And so under design, we have several projects listed, uh, Fodry and Fifty-Sixth Street designs. And so for Fodry, that's from, uh, Highway one ninety-one north to Yukon Road. And for Fifty-Sixth Street, that was from East Loop three thirty-eight to Fodry. Uh, that's design only. And we had budgeted for two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand to do the design of both of those projects. Uh, the encumbered spent, the encumbered or spent amount of money that has been, uh, established or set in that project now is one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. With a, a signed or reserved five hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five of that amount. For Dawn Street from eighty-seventh to Yukon, uh, we had a budget of three hundred thousand dollars. The design came in at three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. So it was about seven thousand dollars over what was initially budgeted. And Dixie, uh, I twenty to South Loop three thirty-eight, uh, is six hundred thousand dollars budgeted, came in just underneath at five hundred and ninety-four thousand, forty-five dollars. All of these projects are under design. Um, Fodry and Fifty-Sixth is about ninety percent, uh, designed. Uh, the, the, um, so Fifty-Sixth Street, uh, is about ninety percent complete and designed. Uh, we're still finishing it up, but, um, uh, it's, it's gone well. The Fodry project is about ninety percent designed as well. The drainage components of that project are what has now kind of caused us to, uh, uh, be a little delayed in getting it completed. Is, uh, we came back to you with some additional design considerations for some detention and things like that. Um, so, uh, the Dixie project, um, is about, I, I believe we're at about sixty percent design, um, on that at this point. Alright, so, uh, the total that we had budgeted under design was about three million, six hundred and fifty thousand. And as of now, five hundred and sixty-three thousand of that is not being utilized. Then is reserved for those. So construction projects, not all of these design projects have, have construction funding. In fact, uh, Fodry is really the only major roadway, uh, part of Dawn. But, uh, so Fodry from Highway one ninety-one to Yukon, uh, we had seventeen million, two hundred and fifty thousand, um, established or budgeted for the construction of that project. We have realized that that project is probably going to cost us closer to twenty million dollars, uh, and as we have gone through design. Even with some of the drainage work, there's still enough drainage, uh, expansion on that project that, uh, we're expecting to be closer to the twenty million dollar range. So if we utilize some of the design fundings that there, uh, seventeen million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars is, is there. And then as you see down at the bottom of what we call the over, over width roadway improvements, we've assigned an additional two million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand out of that in, in port, in, uh, participation in the Fodry construction project. There's an east channel drainage improvements project. This project, uh, is improving drainage, is, 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 uh, intended to improve drainage situation with the major east drainage basins that we have. And one side, on Fodry, it really splits. And on the east side of Fodry, this work that we're talking about detention on the top end will help improve part of that project, part of this, uh, this, uh, drainage area. But also on the west side of Fodry, we have a major component of this drainage coming down. Now, Midland County has, uh, contracted, uh, has received grant funds from the Texas Water Development Board. And they are participating, uh, in a study of that major watershed. So Midland County is, it's just initiated that project. Ector County, City of Odessa, and City of Midland are, are all participating. We've had meetings with them to discuss the scope of the study. And they're looking for, uh, what they can develop, has some good considerations for that. It's a major watershed, even as we see it up in Fodry, it gets to be more and more water as you come south. And that water eventually needs to get to, uh, Monahan Strong. However, its pathway right now is not real, uh, is not real well-defined. And, uh, so it does hamper some of our ability to keep flooding from occurring in areas, so. Uh, downtown improvements, we have seven million dollars that were set, uh, establishing the budget for the, uh, product, the, uh, bonds for downtown. And, uh, that's this, uh, I believe y'all were just looking at, uh, a study in the downtown area. And it will help define where these funds can be useful. Some of the things that have been talked about were lighting improvements, parking, um, uh, sidewalk improvements. Uh, there definitely are some significant problems with people being able to utilize the sidewalks along Grant and those areas, so. But I think the, uh, that study will help to define how to, how to best use, utilize those funds. So the over width roadway improvements, and what, what this category has to do with is, under our, under our ordinance, and this is common in, in almost all cities across the state. I would say all, but I just don't know all of them. But anyway, over width is a method in which, let's say, a developer has within his subdivision or adjacent to his subdivision, a major arterial or a minor arterial. These are roadways that we define that every once in a while, you need a road that's at least five or seven lanes to harry, carry major traffic across the city. So the developer, uh, does not bear the responsibility to build that full street. He bears the responsibility to build, uh, at least twenty feet on each side if it's residential. Um, if it's commercial, they have a, a more substantial consideration. But the city is required to pay for the remaining portions of the roadway. So the city has an obligation to pay for that. With our growth as it has been, these monies were set to identify, to be available so that we could continue to participate in helping those, those developments occur. And so nine million dollars was, uh, uh, assigned or budgeted for those types of improvements. Dawn Construction, which is Yukon to Eighty-Seventh Street, and I'll show you some of these projects in a few minutes. We have about four million dollars assigned for that. The total construction for that roadway, uh, with all improvements is about seven point two million dollars. And so the city's participation, uh, can be end up into the four million dollar range, and so. Uh, Arroyo Road, another one, a hundred thousand. Uh, Ninety-first Street, as you see, there's several of these, I won't describe all of them to you. But these amounts are based on our portion of the roadway construction, not that we build the entire road necessarily. Estancia Road, we'll talk to you about that one in a little bit. And Estancia Road is a road that we're looking for to construct between, um, Billy Hext and Fodry. From Fifty-Sixth Street down to one ninety-one, uh, the, um, the Compass Academy that is, was constructed there, a, a lot of traffic has, has, uh, been created there. Uh, has, and, um, that traffic impacts Fifty-Sixth Street very heavily and impacts Fodry very heavily. Because a lot of people leaving that school are heading east on Fifty-Sixth and then, and coming into Fodry to drop back down, hit south, either down through Fodry, come down to one ninety-one and either go east or west after they drop their children off. And, um, so that, that has become a very heavy and, um, important item for us to try and address. This will help, Estancia will help in that it, it not only helps with the school traffic in itself, but it also helps with alleviating some of the load on Fodry. You're a significant part of the load on Fodry. This will help us during the construction of Fodry as well as the long-term, uh, cost, our cost of having to develop Fodry. We won't have to worry about that's as much, that traffic is badly there, so. So these are all, others are just basically roadways that are developed, or are, have already identified as, uh, things that they're working towards and, and we're, and we're partici- we participate in. Uh, we have a tech stop road, uh, participation funds of four million dollars. And the way these, uh, funds have been utilized are, at this point, these have not been allocated specifically. But what we do with this is, um, is in the last, I would say, five to eight years, the, um, the competition for tech stop funds to improve roadways in your area has become much, much more competitive. And our area is, uh, has a significant need for upgrades of the systems. Whether it be the, the overpass at Yukon that we're seeing now, the overpass up at North three eighty-five on, on the inter, the interchange on, uh, the loop. Uh, we have others that are coming along that way. And these funds are, uh, would be utilized in order to help improve our project standing and have it move up in this timeframe, okay? So a lot of these projects, the major projects to us, may So a lot of these projects, the major projects to us may be ten, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years out on the funding basis. However, if we do, do local contributions to those projects, and we have found this to happen, the projects can move up on the schedule, uh, in certain opportunities. And so we have, we have, uh, several projects there that, that, um, that we could, that we could be looking towards. And a lot of this has to do with the schedule with TechStop. Uh, looking towards is, um, improving their viability and timeframes. Some of those could be the, uh, uh, interchange, uh, well, the north, the northwest, uh, part of the loop, we really look for it to become a full freeway, so that you have frontage roads and the, uh, through lanes. Because there are a lot of safety issues over there, there's a lot of truck traffic that's being pushed over there. And so that's an area we would like to have advanced. The northeast loop with all the subdivision development that occurring there, the same type of thing. Uh, uh, several interchanges that are associated with these. And so these are areas that, uh, could definitely be benefited by, uh, those types of funds. Alright, the next, uh, the next is a CIP table. This is from our, uh, a representation of the tables that are demonstrated in our Transportation Masterment Plan, uh, recommendations that was adopted back in twenty nineteen. And basically what we're wanting to show you here is that many of the projects that you see in that CO issuance are, are based out of this plan. And, and that we're trying to identify how we can meet our needs over a scheduled amount of years. Uh, the yellow, the yellow highlighted items are ones that we have in the dev- design phases right now. The green highlighted projects are conducting, uh, we're conducting some geotechnical evaluations to make sure that the roadway improvements we want to do there are the best solution for those roads. Sometimes we may think a road just needs milling overlay, but if you actually check subgrade and, and base, you may find out that you can, you can put milling overlay on it, but it's not really going to hold up well, so.
Can you explain geotech?
I'm sorry, geotechnical is where you go out and you actually pull soil samples out of the road. It may either be a core type sample in which you use a drill and, uh, take a sample out. Other ways sometimes we'll do it is with the, with the backhoe type samples, you can take a broader amount. And you're just analyzing materials, but, uh, uh, so that, that is what the geotech is, yes sir, thank you. Uh, the red projects are anticipated construction, so those are the ones that we, uh, we are identifying funding for. Um, so a- as you see, Fodry, uh, Fodry from Yukon to one ninety-one, we've identified that we have funds there and that we intend to construct it because we intend to have funds, the, the funds available. Uh, North Dixie Boulevard, you'll see that one's in red. Um, Crane Avenue, two segments of Crane Avenue and, uh, uh, have, are in red. Those are ones that we're looking to use some of our minor maintenance money that, uh, you know, we're trying to make available for those projects. They're small enough in, in value and such, and they are ones that we think we can hit, hit with those funds. Dawn Avenue is, uh, again, as we talked about, partially funded out of our, our, our bond issuance. Then you have the blue or funded from the twenty nineteen COO. Uh, those are the funds over in the left that would say that's how much money has been assigned under this, this, uh, bond issuance. And then the TechStop Street improvements are some projects there that are going on with TechStop. So the upper table, the larger table, this is what we call our major, uh, plan, our major reconstruction plan. So these are the larger highways, we're either, we're either expanding the roads for growth and as well as rehabilitating older roads, or we are, but they're, they're, they're major reconstruction. We're actually taking the roadway out, the, the asphalt, the base going into subgrade, and we're reconstructing these roads. The slower table is what we call our minor maintenance projects. The minor maintenance projects is one that, uh, council has, uh, recently, uh, in, uh, increased this budget to five million dollars annually. And these are for our shell cook programs, our, uh, HA fives, our rejuvenation projects and those types of things, which help us to lengthen the age of the, uh, the, the endurance of the roadways so that, uh, they perform better and, and, and last longer. So these, this is an, that lower table is an ongoing maintenance type of, of schedule. And those are the funds on a couple of these ones up in the upper table that we're trying to utilize, um, in both cases. The main thing is, is that we've done maintenance over decades, and some of that maintenance is now becoming less than fruitful, so.
Tom, let me ask you a question about this.
Yes, sir.
Um, you've got North Grand Avenue, Kermit Highway to West, hey, would that not be a state highway?
Yes, the, those in purple are actually state projects. And so, yes, sir, I'm sorry about that, and, uh, so there, um, uh, there were some identifications of where we may participate or help, but, um, those are primarily being handled by the state, but, so, I think, yeah. So. Looking at a couple of these projects, this is North Ford, Fodry Road Project from one ninety-one up to Yukon. Uh, the project, as we said, is about ninety percent complete. We do have funding identified for the project, so we intend to get it in construction as soon as we can. But it's probably going, I will tell you, it's going to be late summer before this project can probably move because that detention area and that work is going to be, uh, uh, it's important for us to make sure that's all meets what we need and we can finalize the design to be appropriate on Fodry.
You're talking about that drainage area or the, uh?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that, we need to make sure we, we have intentions that we're going to be able to get as much detention out of there as possible, but, you know, I don't want to design Fodry inadequately because we didn't quite achieve what we were looking for, so.
Would this ring a precursor for you to?
Right. Well, I'll, I'll say one thing, I was right driving around taking pictures of it, it did highlight some of the, the, the design aspects that we had, so. There was quite a bit of water up there. So the next, uh, the next one is, uh, demonstrating Estancia Road. Um, and this is the yellow in the road is the roadway. The red highlighted area is the school that has been growing there, Compass Academy. Lower left, you've got the Crossroads, uh, Church. And, uh, there's a lot of, uh, commercial and, um, multi-family residential plans that we have seen trying to develop in that area. Um, what we are working with the entities is to, uh, try and get that road built as soon as possible. It will help us a lot in alleviating the traffic that is going to Fodry right now. If you're ever out there early in the morning, during the traffic time for the schools, uh, you would, I guess now wouldn't be the time to go, but, uh, in the previous weeks, you would have seen a significant amount of traffic there.
Tom, let me ask you a question, I can see where we had a, uh, proposed, and now we moved to the east on, uh, Estancia.
Yes, sir.
Was that, uh, road, was that roadway, uh, purchased or was this proposed?
The, uh, the developers, uh, had some, uh, previous developers that were looking at that, that previous alignment. And, uh, now the more current, uh, development potential is to move it further east. Part of it is so the school can maximize their property on the west side of that roadway. Um, and it, it doesn't harden, harm, harm the design of the roadway, the roadway will function just as well.
But we never purchased that?
No, sir, we're asking for dedications on that. The, uh, the, uh, school is prepared to dedicate their portion on the north end, and, uh, we are working with the church right now to, uh, to work with them on getting there.
It's four lane?
Uh, this is going to be three lane initially constructed. Um, East Fifty-sixth Street, this is the section from the loop going over to Billy Hext. Again, that one's in ninety percent design. Um, uh, we are not funded to construct that roadway, so we are just basically completing design at this time. There is plenty of development potential that's, that can be occurring up there before long. So at, at one point, uh, the city will have to be, uh, at least considering its portion in the, in the roadway's construction. Dawn Avenue, uh, as you see here, the blues, the red segment is the existing roadway alignment. The blue stretch is, uh, where we are intending to straighten on. Uh, so that we will be vacating that, uh, looped section or the S-curve sections on the, on the east side. Uh, that is to improve the safety of that roadway as you get down to Charles Walker, that's, that's a very unsafe condition. And it will also improve efficiency of traffic and things. This roadway, it does, uh, give a, uh, will, it does alleviate or will handle already quite a bit of traffic out of that north area. Everything north of Eighty-seventh has grown very quickly, there's a lot of residential up there. And so this roadway was constructed, like many of the ones we've been talking about, as a county road section. So it's not a real healthy, not a real heavy road section. It's common for counties because they don't normally have as much traffic. But, um, so that roadway is getting in, uh, poor condition as well as the fact that it, uh, its alignment doesn't fit real well. And it's curving gutter, it needs to be widened to five lanes. And, um, so that's the design, will be go to five lanes, curving gutter. And this will help enhance the, the, uh, the growth that we know we're seeing up here, a lot of residential potential is happening up in that area. South Dixie Boulevard, um, so this is, uh, from, um, Interstate twenty, uh, heading down to the city limits, shown here, um, this is a roadway that is also an older county section. It has, uh, has quite a bit of truck traffic on it, it's a very narrow road. It's, uh, it's in very poor condition now. And so we are designing it as an expanded roadway, uh, five lanes.
Isn't that correct now?
And, um, so, uh, we are designing that for the ability to construct that. We do not have funding again to construct that, we only are getting the design ready so that can be, it's time it's necessary.
Is the design, uh, addressing the, uh, the, the, the Monahan Straw?
Yes, sir.
With, uh, with the block drainage, I mean, what?
Yes, there'll be elevated cross-section with, uh, culverts underneath it.
Environment's over being done?
I'm sorry.
Environment's being done, or we're just doing good with, uh, it, we're just doing environment, we're not, you got funding?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. South Crane Avenue, uh, this is the, uh, northern piece that we're trying to do in this year's maintenance money. Uh, we're looking at a milling overlay from Second Street down to, uh, uh, Murphy. Uh, again, we're doing some geotech work there first, so we make sure that we're not, not doing something that won't pay off well. Uh, the next segment is shown from Murphy down to Clements, that roadway section in Ha- oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is the northern section. And now this is from, uh, Murphy down to Clements. Apologize for that. Um, so this section was identified as needing to be reconstructed. We wouldn't be moving curving gutter, we might have to replace a little curving gutter and where it may be damaged. But this is where you would take out the middle of the road, just do the actual pavement section and reconstruct it, you'd take out the asphalt, the pay, uh, the sub, the bait, subgrade and, or the base and down to subgrade. But again, we're doing geotechnical on this, this is a more expensive project, we don't have funding assigned for this. So at this point, we don't have construction capacity there, or construction occurring. South Crane Avenue is, was identified as milling overlay also, so we are trying to get that one into this project this year also. Uh, again, doing some geotechnical work. And that goes from Clements down to, uh, uh, city limits on the south, south side of, uh, loop right there, interstate. North Dixie Boulevard, uh, from about Forty-sixth Street up to, uh, the northern city limits, which is just north of, uh, Fifty-second. Uh, we're looking to try and do that out of our maintenance money this year. This one is a reconstruction, so it's a, it's a heavier project, but it's, uh, within about, uh, two million dollars. And we feel like we can, can get that funding out of our maintenance this year. Uh, but this, uh, this roadway section is getting in pretty poor condition, so, uh, it has a lot of water on it. And we're trying to see if we can take care of that this year. This, uh, this graphic is out of our, uh, Transportation Master Plan, and it's regarding our minor maintenance funds. So this is the funding that we received an increase in in the last year to five million dollars. And what the graphic kind of indicates, we do an assessment, uh, in our master plan, the consultants, Kenley Horn, did an assessment, our pa- pavement conditions. And when they did so, our overall condition came out to about fifty-six. So the, 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 uh, left side vertical, um, axis, uh, PCI, that's Pavement Condition Index. So it's a, it's a scale from zero to a hundred. If your street was brand new, it would have a scale, it would have a rating of a hundred. So on this, they indicate over time what performance of the roadway would look like based on, uh, uh, projection based on our funding of minor maintenance improvements. And so if you didn't fund it at all, you'd be looking at twenty twenty-four, us dropping below what is considered a critical level of fifty, in which our roadway conditions would be getting basically unmanageable and, uh, very, very much more expensive to maintain than probably to re- repair. Uh, our, our, uh, funding prior to that time was about, uh, three point five million per year. And so that, uh, that's the dash line, and that would take you out to about twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-third, twenty thirty, uh, when you would start to see, uh, uh, conditions getting beyond workable really. And then on, uh, but as you see, the next line up, the gray line is the five million line, and that's what we're on now. Uh, and so you would hope that your condition will still be above the critical level at twenty thirty. Uh, the other lines, you're talking close to ten million a year in minor maintenance in order to try and start improving your condition index over, over time. This is basically just a, a graphic to help us to establish some level that would help funding. The next graphic is in, is, uh, the, the pavement conditions that were determined in the rating. They drove almost all, if not all, uh, of the major and minor arterials. Those are the three to five lane roads, four to five, four, no, five to seven lane roads, I'm sorry. And as you can see, there's about twenty, uh, twenty-two million, uh, square feet that they inspected. Um, and they're provided an N, a PCI condition that shows about fifty-five and fifty-two, which is poor. So they're saying our arterials are the ones that, uh, that definitely do need work, and you've seen that in some of our funding bases. A lot of this work is funded generally in bonds. Collectors and locals, those are going to be three lane, two lane roadways. And as you can see, their ratings were about fifty-nine, sixty, fair. But you will see that, uh, the, the locals are seventy-six million square feet. There, there's, um, significantly more collectors and locals, eighty-five million versus about twenty-four million. So you have about four times, three to four times as much of those roadways. So part of the recommendations in the master plan was if you were looking at ideal funding, we would be seeing, uh, the five million, uh, a year, uh, that they identified, but ten million would be better on the minor maintenance. But your major repairs on, on arterials would be about fifteen million a year. And your major repairs on residences would be about thirty-five million a year. So those monies add up very quickly, we are, sir, obviously not able to achieve that at this point. But those are, um, projections that were identified in the study. So the lower left chart shows you in, in, in a certain, uh, roadway categories, how much of it may be in severe condition, how much of it may be in very poor versus how much is in really good condition. And similar on the right is the, is kind of a graphic similar, very similar to the one just above. Some of our future roadway construction needs. Uh, we've, uh, we've noted that Tanglewood from Forty-second to Fifty-second, especially since the storm, we've noted that that roadway appears to have, uh, become to have, uh, has accelerated in damage quite a bit, and we're looking at about one point eight million dollars to rehab that roadway. Fifty-second has been identified in the study and was identified by us. Uh, from Dixie to Grandview, that's about eleven million, from Grandview to JBS, about eight million. So redo Fifty-second Street's about close to twenty million dollars. University from Grandview to the east loop, so the east section of Grand, of University is beginning to show quite a bit of decay. Uh, it's indicated at about seven point four million dollars. Uh, it's indicated at about seven point four million dollars. Um, I would expect that's a little low still, but, uh, Murphy from Westland three thirty-eight to Grandview. Um, a lot of Murphy is in very rough shape. It has, uh, uh, some pretty heavy traffic on it. Uh, but that's showing about eight point eight million. East Ridge, we're seeing, uh, uh, service damage there, five point five million. Billy Hex, about two point one million. Yukon from Andrews Highway to Grandview. If you drive that one, you will see the roadway conditions are, are deteriorating very, very badly. But you're talking about twenty-two million dollars and that would be not only just to reconstruct, but to expand that to a five, at least a five lane roadway. Um, along there. Sorry for the time on that. Took a little long. Uh, any questions or we open?
Cancel any questions or comments, Mr. Kirk?
Good job.
Okay, we're gonna go, uh, to item number six. Uh, consider rejecting the bid for the installation of a new concession restroom building for Floyd Quinn. Mr. Bennett.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
I've got, uh, uh, five bids, four bids here from different contractors on the concession restroom building. Uh, that we proposed for Floyd Quinn Park Baseball Complex. And it was a two-story structure, bid that out, uh, Cooper Construction at five hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred. Midtech Construction at five sixty-five, um, Fleet, Fleet Co. Construction out of Midland, five ninety-seven. Hynix Contractors at five eighty-one, nine seventy-two. The budget that we have listed in this, um, this particular project is four hundred fifty thousand dollars. I want to reject these bids, go back to the drawing board and come back with something that we're going to be able to afford and have on our budget. And, uh, it's gonna be, uh, probably a single-story building. But one good thing about going to a single-story building, we're gonna get an extra, a toilet closet. And it's gonna be the same size as what Sherwood is, so that all of our facilities will be uniform. That's the game plan right now. And we better hurry because building construction costs are going up so fast.
Construction cost, uh, wrong to.
Just in the time that we were doing the plans, we went from an eight dollar two-by-four to twenty-eight dollar two-by-four. So it's, it's incredible how fast everything's gonna, so we need to get it built fast.
Are metals stuff going up at the same rate?
Just about. Well, we found everything that, that we're touching seems to be concrete. There was a shortage and always the, um, plaster was, couldn't be found. And then, I mean, it's just every day it seems to be, everything's a shortage, building boom right now. So that's, um, uh, proposed staff and as well as architect is JSA architects. We, we propose to go back to drawing board.
Cancel any questions, comments, proceed? Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to item seven, consider resolution to accept, uh, an appropriate, uh, appropriate funds for the OPD, uh, busting for badges. Chief Gurk.
Good afternoon, um, this is just a request to accept a donation of a hundred and five thousand dollars from the busting for badges organization. As everyone knows, it's a annual clay shoot, two-day clay shoot that, uh, wow, it's just amazing. Um, you get about fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred people out there and it's just amazing participation by the, by the community. Show of support for law enforcement. Um, the money gets split four ways. So it was, uh, it, think about that, that is, uh, a hundred and five thousand dollars is, is an awesome amount per organization, so.
Any, uh, questions, comments? Thank you very much, sir. Uh, we're gonna move to item number eight, consider resolution of accepting the, uh, J-Rac funds for the desert fire rescue. Mr.?
Good afternoon, Mary C. Campbell. Consider resolution accepting state dollars from J-Rac for desert fire rescue for EMS supplies that we used during the pandemic. Uh, legislation passed this extra second check, uh, for EMS agencies and hospitals and city does not have to match anything for it.
Awesome. This is gonna go to the cause of what we did for the vaccinations also?
And it's gonna go into EMS supplies that we're gonna use from this going forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Comments?
Thank you, sir. Move on to item number nine, consider resolution to accept the appropriate, oh, yeah, funds for the desert rescue and ELOSE.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. I just would like to add a request for an annual grant, um, many that receive on an annual base from a grant from the law enforcement standard education fund. And this is many that we get annually just for to train our officers.
No magic funds in there? Free money.
Can we, can y'all consider it? Thank y'all very much.
All right, so item number ten, consider change, consider changes to modify section, uh, twelve dash two, dash seven, school zones of the city code ordinance.
Good evening, good afternoon, council. Um, this first agenda item is dealing primarily with school zones in the city. Since it's in the city ordinance. Um, how this all originated was the crossing guard program is run by a private company now. It used to be run by PD, um, and, uh, all city management services runs the crossing guards. They came to us with a list of twelve changes they wanted to make. And they range from, um, additional guards at existing locations or lengthening the time that guards serve. But it all, all their, their requests boiled down to one that's based on, in the city ordinance. So that's, um, the, the first one. We'll run through these real quick. Uh, but anytime, um, either a citizen or staff member or school district comes and says, hey, we need. A crossing guard or a school zone in a particular location. This is the form that traffic engineering uses to evaluate all the locations. And we look at the traffic volume on the street, the pedestrian, the kids crossing, um, the speed limits of the street, the width of the street. Those sort of factors. And all those factors boil down to that lower right-hand corner. And, and that kind of gives us a direction of what we should be doing at a particular location based on a certain set of circumstances. So, all that being said. This first request is, um, closer than fifty second. Um, the, uh, crossing guard company wants to eliminate this, uh, crossing zone and, and crossing guard. And primarily to be able to use crossing guards at locations where they're actually needed. This location has, uh, no students crossing. So what the suggestion is, is to remove this crossing guard and remove the existing school zone. That's this one. Next one.
Was that one originally put in thinking of the kids from Island?
Actually, this one is for Ross Elementary. This, that school zone was intended for Ross Elementary, which is south fifty second. Yes. Yes, things changed and patterns changed, that sort of thing. So, and, and I've got a better example later on. But yeah, things change over the years and I can't tell you how long this school zone's been in place. But yeah, right now, there's no kids crossing there.
So just re-distributing their, their, their personnel?
Exactly. Yes, yes. So we could take that crossing guard, put it where there's actually kids. So, yes.
Get that one call.
Yes, we will get that one call. Yes. Um, the next one was actually a request from the school zone, uh, from the school zone, from the school district. They are requesting a school zone to be installed in front of Reagan Elementary on Twenty First Street. That school currently does not have a school zone. So we went out and did the study and what we're recommending is to install a school zone on Twenty First in front of Reagan. The next one, s- in the, uh, same picture. This is the other example of a, of, of great, great example. Is the, there's an existing reduced speed school zone on Grandview at Twenty First. No kids cross there. In the past, there were probably, uh, kids crossing there, but now that Reagan's a magnet school. There's no kids crossing from the east side of Grandview. So this would be a perfect example to get rid of this, uh, ex- existing school zone.
We put in the school zone, they're going to increase the, uh, right turn, uh, north to south?
When the, when the parents stack up and waiting to turn right onto, yeah, we'll, we'll probably have the same number of, uh, stacked up vehicles on Grandview. But the other, the other ninety percent of travelers on Grandview won't have to slow down now for a school zone. Um, the next one is, uh, Dixie and Thirteenth Street. The proposal is to remove the existing school zone and crossing guard. Again, there are no kids crossing here. Same thing with Dixie further south, uh, near Monahans. Um, same situation. There's, we have an existing crossing guard and school zone, no kids crossing. Um, and this is on, uh, Lincoln and Clements. Um, again, we can take this crossing guard, put it where there's, um, actually kids crossing that intersection. So here's the proposal again here is to remove this school zone and crossing guard. And the last one is eighty-seventh and Rainbow, uh, to remove this existing school zone. No kids are crossing at this location either, so.
Yeah, what's for which school?
This was for, uh, Ra- uh, Barbara Jordan up north. Yeah, yeah. Which there is a crossing guard at ninety-first and Rainbow further north, closer to the school. But yeah, there, there's no kids crossing here. So that's what this, um. This is what this whole agenda item is, is regarding school zones. One installation and the rest were approvals.
So do we have any, uh, anywhere where they're being re- uh, redistributed?
So, so, and I didn't, I didn't include it in your agenda pack because we're only dealing by the city ordinance in establishing and removing the school zones. But yeah, I have, I have a list of twelve locations where the crossing guard company wants to take these crossing guards. And use them where they're actually needed.
You know, just make some comparisons and.
Sure.
Just cause that way we can, we have to say we're, we're not getting rid of, we're just moving them.
Yes, yeah, I can, I can give you the full list and see where, you can see where they're being distributed to.
That'd be great.
So.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Oh, we're back up next, uh, item, uh, no, consider ordinance for temporary speed limit for text out construction project.
What this is, this item is, Tech Stock is building a traffic signal at East Loop three thirty-eight and Johnman Shepherd Parkway. As, uh, as part of the construction project, they're going to reduce the speed limit during the construction prog- project. They're handling it on, um, the loop because that's their roadway. They can establish a speed limit. They're requesting that we, the city, we do a temporary construction speed zone on Parkway. From fifty-five miles an hour down to forty-five miles an hour during the duration of this project. They're asking us to do those construction speed zones since it's our roadway. Um, the, it's supposed to start in September of this year and be completed in November of this year.
Um, the forty-five?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Being none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number twelve, consider a resolution for supporting applications to text out twenty twenty-one transportation alternatives. Uh, call for projects.
So what this is, is Tech Stock has put, has a program, a grant program. Uh, it's called transportation alternatives. And basically what it's focusing on is bicycles, pedestrians, other modes of transportation. To, to enhance and get those projects built. Um, traffic engineering, uh, we su- we submitted a Fodry Road sidewalk project. Cause basically the Tech Stock program has two applications process. There's a preliminary and a final application. And basically, um, uh, traffic engineering, we submitted a initial project, this project. Um, and, and you can get turned down or accepted. So I got notified that we were accepted and that we were granted to move on to the next step. The next step in the, in the, um, application process requires a resolution of support. That's what this agenda item is basically. Um, what the project is, is build a sidewalk on the west side of Fodry. I got a call several years ago now, uh, from the Parks Senior Living Center. That they have residents that wish to use the commercial businesses to the south. There's no existing sidewalk on Fodry. So that's what this whole, um, transportation alternative project is, to get seniors from the north to the south. Um. What we're trying to do is, um. And the other thing with this, I, as I said, the resolution. This Tech Stock project is not a grant program really. It's a reimbursement. So the city, we are gonna have to upfront the cost of the entire project. And then get reimbursed everything except for our twenty percent local match. So the numbers for that work out, that the entire project is, uh, um, estimated at three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. We will pay everything except for the sixty-six thousand two hundred, which is our twenty percent local match. So the, this resolution is basically saying that the city is willing to upfront the costs of this project. And we, and the other thing is, is in the, in the schedule of the Tech Stock project. It took me several months just to find out that I was approved for the first, um, application. I'm not expected to find out if we're approved for the second, uh, uh, application until October. So this is gonna put us into next fiscal year. So that's another piece of information. But that's what this is, is a resolution of support that we will upfront the cost of this project.
And you, you would basically just wait to get the second one and you get, you would have to do this process again if you find out about the second half?
If, if we get awarded by this second application, then we are coming back to you for funding. Uh, to identify funding, yes.
For the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have some ideas right now on, on funding?
What did we talk about?
You're gone.
I was looking for Cindy, we had talked about that. Um, uh, we had talked about that and I slipped something, so I'll tell you now, I can't remember what we talked about.
But Cindy didn't hear you?
Nope, nope, so.
Were we using maintenance money?
Yeah, you're going after somebody's management.
Yes, yes. So that's, that's why everybody left. They didn't want to even take the money.
Any questions or comments for him? How that, very good. Is that it?
I think that's it for me tonight. Yes.
Before I cut you off. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item thirteen, discuss boards and commissions. Ms. Grimaldo.
Man, I'm cold. Are we on a quick break? We're out of here. Holy moly, Michael, it's cold in here. It's cold in here. It's cold.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, questions were brought, were raised about serving on boards and commissions. So this chart was put together, it's information, uh, on boards and commissions. And it, and it has information regarding using the, either state law, bylaws or, uh, resolutions. So this chart, real quickly, it's divided up into two parts. The first section is where council members serve on the boards or commissions. It also identifies the types, whether it's an advisory board, a standalone board. It also identifies the types, whether it's an advisory board, a stand alone board, uh, stand alone being outside of the community. Discusses the responsibilities, purposes, memberships, and you've probably seen this chart just in a different format. Um, but I wanted to identify the council members that serve. The second portion, which is on page four of SciCom, those are just the other boards that have memberships appointed by the city council. None of the council members serve on those boards currently. So, um, what, what I wanted to do is just isolate those boards that council serves on. And, uh, some of it does require state mandates such as the animal shelter advisory, just wanted to give you a quick example. That's mandated by the Health and Safety Code, that's listed in the membership, where, uh, an elected official is, is composed of that particular board. Another quick example is we have the keepers of beautiful, they have their own bylaws and it identifies with an elected official who serves on it. Um, so what I, what I want also, what I did was I contacted and researched the six pick cities which were Lubbock, which is Tom Falls, Evelyn, Millan, Amarillo, and San Angelo. And I posed a question, contacted the city secretary's office to post a question if your council members serve on boards and committees. And most of them do not serve on boards and committees. If they do, they serve as a liaison or an ex officio. Now, of course, as a city of, um, Amarillo, they do, excuse me, the San Angelo, they do have the animal welfare board, so they do have a council member that serves on the board. But most of the six pick cities do not serve as voting members, they serve as either liaisons or ex officios, or they just appoint an interested citizen to serve on the board. So it is a council's discretion to consider, to discuss, uh, to have a policy on boards, whether if council members wish to serve on boards, um, to be a liaison or an ex officio on those boards. Uh, and then also maybe if they wanna do a policy regarding abstentions. Um, legal will address the conflict of interest. Now, uh, we are required by state law regarding conflict of interest. And those are filed in the city secretary's office and they are on the county, on the city of Odessa website as, as required by law. Uh, but I'd like to turn it over to Natasha in regards to the conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Regarding the conflict of interest, like Norma said, she contacted the big six cities and so in order to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest on boards, um, you can avoid that by council members not serving on boards. But that is totally a decision of council. And so one of the things I wanted to recommend to the city council is they may want to meet and discuss a policy on how we handle conflicts of interest when it comes to perceived conflicts of interest. The only thing that the legal department moving forward will be involved in when it, when it comes to conflict of interest will be the conflict of interest by law. And that's chapter one seventy-one of the Local Government Code and chapter one seventy-six of the Local Government Code. Yes. I did not pass out the entire chapter one seventy-one, which goes into all the details of conflict of interest because you have those and a lot of council members have told me they don't like a lot of papers, so I did try to keep it as little paper as possible. But we can send that out to you if you like, um, the whole chapter one seventy-one. But, um, as far as, um, the abstentions that are required by law, those are the only things that legal will be looking for, moving forward. And one seventy-one is regarding real property and business interest. And one seventy-six is the income and gift from, and family relationships with others. And so those are the two that are required by law. There are some others, um, that won't come up often, but if they do, definitely will require conflict of interest. And that's like, um, property acquired with public, um, funds. And so if a council member has an interest in that property and we acquire it, you would be, um, required to file a conflict of interest disclosure form. So.
Go ahead, Mr. Go ahead.
So there are other conflicts of interest and they are perceived conflicts of interest. So that would be your words and other things that you perceive as a conflict of interest. And that's when I, that's why I think council should discuss this harder and maybe come up with a policy of how they want to handle those conflict of interests in the, in, in the future. Or, um, you know, as a council member, you can abstain in, for anything that you want to abstain for. That's, that's just it, the perception, and, you know, and.
And this is based on, whose ever perception on ours or the public's?
On the, probably the public's perception.
Yes, and yes, and yes.
Yes. And so that's why sometimes I think you abstained last time and I thought it was a relative abstention on a perceived conflict of interest which your brother was appointed to a board. And so those are going to come up, um, but from here on out, the only abstentions that legal will be concerned about and will address will be conflict of interest by law.
So, kind of legal's recommendation is either we get off of these boards or we go in as non-voting, um, yeah, liaison. So that would be really pretty simple.
Except for the, uh, animal control or any others that are made by state law. But other than that, I think, you know, if you wanna serve on boards and, and commissions, that would be the cleanest way to serve on a boarding commission. And also thinking, since we're speaking of it, if you are serving as a liaison or an ex officio member, one of the things that I have not witnessed is the reporting of what is going on in those boards and commissions. So if you're serving on those boards and commissions in order to inform council of what's going on, I think that is important to set aside any day to report on those particular boards and commissions. And that's why I'm thinking that it council wants to consider a policy. Those are things that would get right into the policy and, and the procedure for serving on those boards.
We also have a good line of things. What, what about the, the bonds? You know, we have, we have different, all, how many boards do we have? I mean, to the, yes, uh, twenty-four?
Four, thirty.
Right? And a lot of, uh, someone gonna have it in the math? Yeah.
Some of them are having, uh, form issues.
Yeah, you know, and, and normally the one, if the one watching all over, the thing is, it is different board when that seems under reported. So this would just, let me add this, would this help in the oversight?
I think it would. And I think this is the time to also look at all of those boards and commissions and see if there's really a use for all the boards that we have and the commissions. That way, the oversight would be easier because we wouldn't have so many boards to monitor. And also it's just hard to look at bylaws.
I was gonna ask, uh, 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 now you have bylaws that are basically set because of the state mandating to that nature, but they're also uniformal. Is that, is, is that what you're looking at?
Well, I don't think we have any, um, that are state mandated. Bylaws, normally the organizations have come up with their own bylaws. And so depending on what council's pleasure is, I think some of the organizations, we would have to contact and ask them to really look at their bylaws, especially when it comes to voting membership versus non-voting membership.
Now, in order to do that, there's some of the bylaws that require members on the council to, to be on, so that's what we're looking at.
Right, and there are some, like, I can remember the MOUTD bylaws and they require, you know, I believe two council members to serve from each city. And so in those instances, you know, you would appoint two council members, but I think the reporting back to the city council on what's going on on those boards would hear any appearance of, of impropriety or anything like that.
Any questions and comments?
And I can maybe schedule to where the board would put on a, uh, annual reporting period to come before council to provide a report to the city council.
You said something that used to be independent, was it, was it practice?
Yes, we used to do, I would have invite the chair of the board to come and report to the city council.
I have a question. So when you look under the top and it says city advisory or committee, we, downtown board to consider a hybrid? Can you explain?
Well, normally you say the hybrid. But I can say, you know, now that won't be addressed because it's not a conflict of interest by law. So legal would not require, ask for an abstention for the downtown board, uh, for anything like that in the, in the future because, you know, sometimes, and then I was talking to the mayor after the fact, sometimes we move quickly. And I think at the last meeting, we should have probably recessed or come back to this issue and address it more. Because after sleeping on it, you're elected every council member. So there should be a board that would conflict you from being able to vote, um, as a council member.
So, uh, at the, at the last meeting, you know, there was some research done. And I know that you guys have to do a lot of research. It probably also would be helpful, and I would like to ask just that if there's a request for research for things of this nature that will affect all of us, that the information be sent to all of us.
We will do that.
Even if one person requested, if it pertains to this, then we probably should all have that information.
Okay, we can do that.
Let me ask a question, let me ask a question, like, in, in the facade to the downtown, then it goes to ODC, things of that nature, you have a committee of people that are to, to, to.
I think you're on that committee.
And that's what I, I, I've asked about that because, you know, I'm involved in so many layers of it, it's like, okay.
And, and, and that's what I, when I talk about perceived conflict of interest, that, that's some of the things that we kinda wanna prevent. And I think what we could do is really look at that committee, maybe you, it could be a council appointee team that serves on that committee. Somebody that actually has, um, I forget who's appointed to that committee, but maybe there's specific skill sets that council's looking for, that they would like, like on that committee.
In, in, in that scenario, you have someone from the tiers board, then you have someone from, from the council. And, 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 and so they're involved in three facets of it, which is redundant. And so, you know, you're from, you have one committee and then it goes to the body and so it goes, you know, hence it goes, it goes to tiers and it goes, I mean, I don't remember the process, but, you know, it basically is, we're involved, so I, I hear it about three times, like, man, this is just redundant. Two also that they gather, you know, and so, and I asked that question about the conflict in that. Um, okay, so I always wonder, is what also address, you know, any instances like that? I think this is probably about the only one that, that actually is a dynamic component in that process.
And we can get that.
You asked, look at that, if you're getting it correct, someone supplies for infrastructure?
Or facade grant, it does go through three, essentially four layers of approval. The first approval is staff, then it's the design committee, then it's OCC, and then it's council. Uh, my proposal would be to this council is to eliminate the design committee portion of that and let staff just do its pressuring, normal review, forward that to OCC, which has to happen because we have to have their approval and then the final approval with this in council.
And that makes sense to me because it was very confusing sitting down on the downtown board and I voted yes for those facade grants. But then I come in front of council and voted no, so that's a little strange.
Yeah, that, that one needs some cleanup.
Okay. So can we, I mean, to make this simple, can we just blanketly say that any city council member serving or assigned to a committee is ex officio? Or liaison, or whatever? And, and that way, I mean, because, man, if we're waiting to look at bylaws and do all of this, then everybody's kind of staying in limbo of not knowing. But if we blanketly say you're a non-voting member, then does that clear any discussions over these boards?
Council, to, to council to supersede it all, right?
Right. And, uh, I think in, in certain instances, yes, and others would have to, you know, like the MOUTD, those, those are the ones we would have to look at.
I, I, I'll point you at that point because there are boards that you serve on that your vote is actually needed.
Like downtown Odessa?
Uh, maybe you're not observing, MOUTD, where there's actual, um, of, other, um, government entities have voting members and certainly I think you would wanna mirror that as well.
But I think given that, you know, the times that they would come before us, I mean, you have to also measure what is gonna be that conflict. They're not requesting, you know, they're not requesting money. I mean, it's, it's kinda, with some, like this one, it's just not a one, one, two bits off, one with drag bits off, one size fits all.
The MPO is made up of nothing but elected officials. It's all commissioners, judges.
And I think we would have to keep those committees, but, but like I said earlier, I think the reporting would be important if it's something that could be perceived as a conflict of interest. That's why I have to point out, because we don't know, um, who will perceive it, anything is. But as, at the same time, I think that, um, the service on those boards, we would have to keep our elected officials on those boards that make major decisions, like MOUTD and MoTran or MPO now, so.
And I think some, you know, not knowing what goes on in those meetings, I mean, oftentimes or recently something has come up with the, with the budget vote while I was serving and I did not vote on that budget. So I have no conflict when it comes before us, um, possibly for hot funds, I have no conflict because I was not involved in that process and I know that.
And I think that's important just to know that when that comes up. So nobody will have any questions or concerns of that nature. But I think for the boards that we can, um, serve as ex officio or liaisons, it would be a cleaner, um, fix.
Agreed. Council, any questions, comments?
So, um, please let us know what direction you would like for us to move in, um, what.
I would go ahead and just, I'd go ahead and go in that direction. If you just do a blanket cross, but that's my, my, my assessment. I would like to counsel each individual to weigh in on that.
No, I agree.
So for us not to have anybody else on any board, is that what you're, is that the direction you want to take?
Re- recommendations is for no council to be serving, uh, you know, and we could serve as a liaison
or an ex officio.
or an ex officio we shoot to, and we can make that decision.
You said, except for the boards that require, right?
Right.
Like me and Tom are on the MoTran board, so we.
Right.
Okay.
And you would still have continued serving.
And both, and both city secretary and, and, and legal would go do that and, and they would, they, they, they would, you're gonna come back with recommendations right now and just ask him, you know, for, for direction, which is what we want to look at, what that would look at, what, what that level would be and, with that data policy, Michael?
Just sort of, you can sort of implement that as a council policy.
Okay. But yeah, that, that's the last thing for doing it.
I'm the same, I, but I do wanna ask one other thing, you know, because it was brought up on the animal, uh, the animal, um, shelter advisory. You know, I guess we can't really address what happened prior to two years ago, but since then, I mean, they don't discuss budget, they don't, they didn't have input on, other than having a play area for dogs. I mean, they didn't, they weren't involved in any of that. So is that area a conflict for Tom and I?
No, it's purely advisory in nature. Those are some board, and I don't know how far we need to look into these because there's a part of advisory board, but it is stated that a city, but I think the statement is a city official or a county.
Is that the statement they put or?
Because you have the Parks and Management Board, you have the Parks Foundation with the five oh one C three.
See, only one county municipal official.
Cause you have the five oh one C three, it's at the Parks Foundation.
And then they don't have any council members on, on, um, well, wait, I'm sorry, I was talking about the Parks and Management Board.
But the Foundation, which is the five oh one C three, would receive money from citizens.
Right.
Uh, donation program. And then what about the Fire and Emergency Board?
And I sit on that one too.
You said one of the five oh one pension.
And I think that would be included in our policy and I think that's the good thing about coming up with this policy that the whole council can go on and agree on. that the whole council can vote on and agree on, and you will have your committees or boards laid out.
To let it, that reception.
I, I think keeping it as simple as we can on that, and if, you know, there may be still some gray areas, but, yeah, put us down as non-voting and whatever. And to see how, you know, the five oh one C three back, yeah, that's, that's, that could be financed with the federal, you know, that's something that would be.
Something about that.
That would be included, as you said, the five oh one C three.
Yeah.
Because that, that could get that agency in trouble if, if there's a conflict.
This is a housekeeping that's long overdue as far as with the, the amount of committees.
Yes.
Stop, yeah.
Yeah, I'd kinda like to know what the big six are doing. If you're the first municipality that's come across this question.
No, no.
How, how's everybody else having it?
They don't have any.
She just, they don't have any.
Midland.
She called and asked them, and they don't, they don't have any.
The, the, the question's what's your city policy?
Oh, the policy?
How does your city council handle conflict spending? And, you know, that's the question, kind of a canvas.
We can do that, definitely.
That I, I know, because we're not the first city to have a question like this.
No.
So, go ahead, did I give you enough direction?
It does, it does, no. And I'll send out all that research, everyone, I'll work with them, um, so we can get that out in the council.
Sounds good, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think we're getting on, uh, seeing that that's all the business I have before, is do I have a motion, a second to adjourn? I have a mo- I have a motion by Councilwoman Willis, second by Councilman Sprouls, all in favor, indicate if I say no.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, we are adjourned.